Welcome to another edition of Lakeville's City Council Wrap-Up. During this program, we will highlight the agenda items presented to the Lakeville City Council at their September 16th, 2013 meeting. First highlighted item on the agenda is item number 5C, Police Department Monthly Report. And to give the information regarding this agenda item is Chief of Police Tom Van Haas.
Our mission statement, in partnership with the community that we serve, we are dedicated to reducing crime, problem solving, and ensuring the quality of life in Lakeville. Every month, we look at selected categories to see how we're doing in relation to our mission statement. In the area of reducing crime, we had no homicides, two criminal sexual conduct cases reported, that's 19 year to date, two robberies, four year to date. I spoke to the detectives today on these robberies, and they're both what we call simple robberies. They do not involve weapons, they involve juveniles. One involved taking a backpack, and I think the other one involved taking a bike. But because of the nature of the crime, when the person's present, we have to classify that as a robbery. Domestic assaults, seven, 37 year to date. Other assaults, three, 34 year to date. Burglaries, eight, and 67 year to date. Although we've had some high-profile burglaries this year, and I'm going to talk about one later in the report, if you actually look at the figures, our 67 burglaries year to date is the lowest number that I can remember in recent past. And some of the reason for that, I think I'll talk about a little bit in the report when I get on to talking about a specific case. Fraud cases, 11, that's 101 year to date. Traffic crashes, 48 versus 65 for August of 2012. You can see our crashes are also down, 400 versus 461. Speed citations, 63 versus 76. Seat belt violations, six versus nine. DUIs, 20, and DUIs are up this year, 140 versus 110. And total traffic stops, 754, 5,477. And quality of life, medical emergencies, 135 for the month, 1,015 year to date. Crisis-related calls, 48, 47, or 427 year to date. Animal calls, 154, 1,074 year to date. Suspicion calls, 255, 1,453 year to date. And total calls to the PD, 842, those are telephone calls. And total cat incidents, which is a measure of all the incidents that we do, 3,077. About 22,488 incidents that we responded to this year. If we look at the distribution of property crimes for August, see, they're really divided into two categories. Property damage, which is not unusual. We have minor vandalism cases throughout the city. These are generally under $500 damage, 29%, 31 of those. And thefts under $500, also not unusual during the summer, that that's our largest category, 28%. You can see, it makes up the rest of it. Burglaries, 7%. Checks and theft, 10%. Shoplifting, 13%. And what that looks like when we compare it to last August of 2012 is that virtually almost all of the categories are down, except for the category of shoplifting, which went up from eight to 14. It's all good news. The street crimes activity, two shirts warrants. And what that is up there on the top picture, and I'm just going to point this out, is a Jolly Roger. And that's one of our SROs, got those, and they are laced with THC. And so, just the type of things that we run into. You know, in drugs, and illicit drugs, you know, we see all sorts of different things at all different times. And I thought it'd be helpful just to put up some of the things that do come up. We had two search warrants. The Street Crimes Unit and Dakota County Drug Task Force executed a search warrant on a residence that really originated from Lakeville Patrol tip, which means their patrol officers have provided tips and citizen complaints about this residence. They did a search warrant, and after executing the search warrant, they had paraphernalia and methamphetamine, and they are charges pending in that case. And the second warrant, again, the Street Crimes Unit working with the Drug Task Force, did a townhouse, a warrant at a townhouse on Gillette Way. And that's the third search warrant that Street Crimes has drafted for this residence. And this resulted in a fifth-degree felony controlled substance charge, as well as petty misdemeanor charges. And, you know, one of the things about street crimes is that because of their knowledge specifically of our city, and their time that they spend specifically in our city, we can concentrate on certain residences or locations where we're having problems and give them our attention, which we have found to be very effective in improving the quality of life in neighborhoods and really being effective at working at the street level type of drug dealing. Our traffic unit officer, Officer Jessica Swan, will be taking over from Officer Todd Williams. That's Officer Todd Williams there. He's, of course, going back to South High School. He is their SRO. This will be his fourth year at South. And so, Jessica Swan will be taking over. This year, or this past month, we've been working on County Road 46 and Highview Avenue area. And I did want to mention that we've also got an award of a Stalker Lighter Radar Unit for participation in the Dakota County Traffic Safety Initiative, our July Speed Enforcement. And the state of Minnesota is awarding us a radar unit. A LIDAR is a handheld radar unit, about a $2,000 value that the state of Minnesota is giving to us, but it's a great deal. So, that's as a result of the Traffic Safety Unit. I'm going to talk about this in-progress burglary arrest on August 9th. This is a very high-profile arrest, and I'll start from the beginning and talk through it. What happened is an officer was driving on patrol about 4:00 in the morning, and drives by a residence and noticed the garage door is open, overhead garage door, attached garage. And as he looked into the garage, as he's driving by in the street, he sees that the door leading into the house, the service door leading into the house, from the garage is standing ajar. So, he goes to the front door of the house, knocks on it, wakes up the occupants of the house. They find out that they've been burglarized. And that a number of their electronic devices have been taken. So, while the officer is there talking with them, they activate one of the devices that will show where the device is at, and it's three blocks away. So, we send a couple squads over there, to that location, and they find a car with two individuals in it. The two individuals, of course, bail out when the officers get there and go running off into the night. Unfortunately, one of them had one of the stolen iPhones in his pocket, so they continued to track him and caught him in short order. Then our K-9 unit responded and was able to capture the other suspect. This is the vehicle that they had. When the officers looked into the vehicle, they found other iPhones and smartphones and electronic devices, and soon learned that a second residence had also been burglarized, and that the people were still asleep and unaware that they'd been burglarized. So, the officers went to that residence and took the report. Sometime later, this is about 4:00 AM, about 6:00 AM, some residents in the area reported an individual who they thought might have been related to this case, running through the neighborhood. So, we set up a perimeter, and this was about a six-block perimeter, and searched for about six hours for this third individual. And we used the helicopter, the State Patrol helicopter, and we had a couple of K-9 units came out. So, it was a high-participation search. We had officers, probably about 15 to 18 officers involved in this search, looking for this potential third person. The two suspects were already in custody, of course, were not speaking to us and would not tell us if anyone else was in this vehicle. So, we're not sure if they were, at the time, we were not sure whether they were or not. We searched for about six hours till about noon, and then disbanded the search at that point. As a result of this case, two individuals were charged with two counts of first-degree burglary, which, of course, is the most serious degree of burglary, which means that it's an occupied residence. The interesting thing is, the second individual here, Markey Mitchell, is, was actually arrested once before by our department, just four months ago, for a first-degree burglary. And you may recall that in April, we caught an individual who had burglarized a house, and we caught him a few blocks away after this. And he was already back out and committed another burglary. This individual is now incarcerated, pending the trial, and a high bail has been set, so will not be released. The third individual, the detectives tell me that they believe they know who it is, and they're working on getting that individual charged to it, because they do believe this third person was involved in this case as well. This is just great work by the officer. Both of these burglaries were discovered before the residence even knew that they had been burglarized. So, that's a great job by the officers. The detectives did a great job. It was a team effort. We probably had about, probably 12 officers involved in this case, working on it. We had detectives processing the scenes, the cars, and making the case. And as a result of that, we have two criminal charges and two individuals who will have to face these multiple charges, and the third individual as well. And, you know, as I make the point about the burglaries is that we, and this was very high-profile, a lot of people saw this and probably called about this, and called our office as we were in the process of this. But as we catch these individuals and incarcerate them and hold them accountable for this, then they're not able to commit additional crimes. Let's move on. We also had safety camp, August 12th and 13th at Antlers Park. You see Officers Mike Katzewitz and Sean FitzHenry over the corner there. That's the helicopter, that's the State Patrol helicopter. One of their pilots, who are also state troopers, landed in the field there at Antlers Park with the kids. Of course, we have our partners, our fire department is there, park department is a huge partner in this. And the safety camp continues to be one of our most popular programs that we do in the summer. We have, Officer O'Neal was also involved in this camp. We have three or four officers involved, the park department employees, the fire department's there. Alina is also there and teaching kids about safety. And since its inception, we're thinking we have about 2,000 kids who have gone through this, including some of our officers. We also had Night to Unite on August 6th, and thank you to all the council members who were able to come and participate in that. We really appreciate that. We had 76 parties this year across Lakeville, and it was one of those nights where it was just beautiful out early on in the evening, and then by the time we got to the last party that we were going to, there was a storm looming to the north there, and it broke up the parties almost exactly at 9:00. You can see a couple of Target people there. That's Heidi Crane, one of our reserves officers. There's also a Target employee there. Target provides us with donations that fund many of the activities that we do on Night to Unite, and help to make it a success. Another program that really, it's the primary residential program, allowing our residences to really get to know each other, and I have a police officer and a fire department come and see them. And another picture, Chris McGruff there on the 6th. And something else that we did, we presented an active shooter crisis response training at Lakeville North High School on August 29th. This is Sergeant Jason Polinsky doing the lecture at the beginning. All Independent School District 194 employees attended this training. There was one in the morning, one in the afternoon. There's about 1,600, they estimate about 1,600 employees attended this. So, not only the professional staff, but also all of the support staff attended this training. In the last year, as you know, Sergeant Polinsky's come and talked to the council about the Three Echo Training. All of our officers, all of our emergency personnel have been trained in this. This was an expansion, and we believe the first high school staff, or the first school district staff that have been trained in this Three Echo Response and what to do in these emergencies. And this was very, very well received by the school district, and it gave them an opportunity to, there was dramatizations of what might happen. This is not actually smoke, it's fire department provide us with a smoke machine. And this was really a complete first responder response, in that we had about 25 police officers involved in the training, mostly Lakeville officers, but we also had a contingent of Burnsville officers and a Rosemont officer involved in it. We had 10 of our firefighters involved in this. We had a line of paramedics. We had Dakota County Communications Dispatchers actually dispatching the event over the PA system. And if you look at that picture in the gym there at Lakeville North High School, you can see along the upper row, there's teachers all the way around there and staff viewing what's going on down in the demonstration area. So, they got an opportunity, and some wanted to participate. They could participate in the exercises, or they could view them as well. And here's an example, you can see our officers in the diamond formation evacuating wounded people, wounded participants out of the simulation area. And the staff was able to view this. This is in the open area at North, and they were able to view it from the second floor there. And again, this was a very well-received training. This was completely put together by our staff. Our staff went out and did all the research for this training, put this all together, went as far to contact other departments across the nation to see what they were doing, and really a leading, a leading agency in safety. And we feel that by doing this training, and I know that the staff came away feeling much more confident in law enforcement's ability to respond to these incidents, but also more confident in what to do if faced with these types of incidents. And so, we felt it was very effective training, and we thank the school district for allowing us to come in and do that. And that concludes my report for August of 2013, and thank you very much.
Next highlighted item on the agenda is item number 5D, Parks and Recreation Department Monthly Report. And to give the background information on this agenda item is Parks and Recreation Director, Brett Altergott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is the August 2013 Parks and Recreation Department Report. Start off at the Arts Center. Summer camps finished up in August. We had a really good season of summer camps. We had over 680 adults and kids attend our classes at the Arts Center this summer. So, like I said, very successful. You can see the pottery classes. I was able to witness the class that day. Again, phenomenal what those kids can do. And then along with our adult artists as well. Again, Tom and the staff over there have done an outstanding job of offering multitude of different classes that people are interested in. Also at the Arts Center, we had two productions over the course of the last month, August 9th through the 18th. We had Everybody Loves Opal. We had 376 attend that performance during that run. And the Prairie Fire Theater presented Sleeping Beauty, August 23rd and 24th, and we had 483 attend those performances. Also, you probably received it in mail, but the playbill went out for the 2013, 2014. So, if you haven't received it, it is available online, or you can pick up another copy at the Arts Center or here at City Hall. Park Maintenance, Mr. Petrie touched on this as part of his monthly report, but we did on 175th Street, there was a trail reconstruction, and on 205th Street, there was a trail overlay. Since these photos have been taken, the restoration was completed late last week along those stretches. A contractor finished that, I believe. It started on 205th, was done on Wednesday, and by Friday, at the end of the workday, 175th had been completed.
So, all those trails are open?
All those trails are open, correct.
Thank you.
Also on the Park Maintenance McGuire, warming house, as you can see in the photo to the left, was looking a little rough. So, we had the Tree Trust help us out. They took off the siding, we re-sided and then painted the building, the warming house, and also put on some additional doors. Of course, our partnership with the Tree Trust reduces the cost of being able to do Also, it was a busy month for the maintenance. We did trail sweeping and seal coating over 14 miles of the trail, and we also fog sealed six parking lots, and that was done by contractors. We did the sweeping that you see in the left-hand picture, and then all seal coating was contracted Also, they repainted ID signs and gates throughout the system and at Ritter Farm Park Shelter. As you can see, the gate is now black. In the picture to the left, it used to be the blue and the orange and the green. We've gone to more standardized throughout the system. And the shelters, of course, we get those touched up as well, keep them looking fresh. Probably one of the biggest things, and in those of you who, I wasn't here last year at the time, but we did have an issue with some motorcycle parking at Antlers. We were lucky enough that an Eagle Scout did complete that project for us over the course of the last month. And so, there you see a gentleman using that. So, if you go off the parking lot and you go, just continue straight where the turnaround will be, we now have a motorcycle parking area. I know that was something that everyone worked really hard to see happen, and we're very happy that was done by an Eagle Scout. Recreation side, we have 48 attend, 48 kids attend the safety camp at Antlers Park, as Chief had mentioned. That ran over two days, August 12th and 13th. In addition, our fall Recreation Arts Center brochure was delivered to homes, and athletic fields have been scheduled for the fall. Again, that's a very busy time for us, getting all the athletic fields done. We had to reschedule our move, actually, flag football from King Park over to Parkview Elementary due to some field restoration that was being done at King. In addition, on August 6th, we had a trail run at Ritter Farm Park. Pre-registration was a little slow, but we had approximately 50 runners attend that evening. It was a beautiful evening, and it was one of those drop-in programs that people could register for. It's a great run, very difficult course, a lot of uphill near the end, but all that participated enjoyed it, and we increased our numbers by about 25 to 30 over last year's run. And we're also taking applications at this time for warming house attendance. I know it seems like we shouldn't be talking about that in September, but we'll have ICE before you know it, and we'll need staff out there. On the senior side, things, we had eight new members in August, so our total for annual right now is 916. I apologize, I don't have in comparison to a year ago, but I'll have that next month's report. Also on August 6th, the Night to Night Kickoff was co-sponsored by the Lakeville Police Department. And again, that was at the Heritage Center with the seniors participating. Seniors also have ping pong groups that meet weekly. It's very competitive, if you go in there, be ready to play. And we're very proud to say Wally Potter received a 2013 Outstanding Senior Citizen Award at the Dakota County Fair this year. As many of you know, Wally's instrumental in a lot of different things that happened in this community. Namely, there was an event today as well that he led, that was very successful for Also, the seniors, there's a day-old bread. It's picked up and delivered by senior volunteers five days a week from local grocery stores like Three Cub Stores, Target, Starbucks. And if you've ever seen that, Linda has to hand out tickets, and it has to be very coordinated. And it does go. But whatever is left over gets donated to a food shelf. I would say most days, it does move, but there's a lot of seniors that come in looking for that. And again, it has to be very coordinated by Linda, and she does an outstanding job with that program. Some of the projects I put in here, the Kendrick Avenue Trail, the photos you're looking at, the one on the left, that is right by 195th Street looking north. They're working in that area right now, digging that out. The goal is to basically go from the lake and work our way back to 205th Street, and within the next week or two, to have that paved. So, and you're also, on the right-hand picture, you're looking right by Merrick's Towing, where there's that steep runoff over there. So, you'll see a lot of the work in there. They recently just got past Tara, and they're waiting on that 205th Street area, because when we get by Porter House, they just want to be able to get in there, do what they have to do by those businesses, and stone it, and pave it, and get to the lake. And then what you'll see is, there will be, as we talk about traffic, we're working with the Public Works Department and the PD. There will be, the sheet pile walls will be going in, and that is going to cause some additional delays. And there will be, at times, it will be down to one lane as they're doing, and it'll be flagged on each end. So, it'll be, it'll be a little tight on there. But again, that's going to be for the worker's safety while they get that project done. Additional projects, I don't have pictures of that I've mentioned, the Mashad Park dugouts, they're nearing completion. You can see there's the roof, the walls are up. We're waiting on the steel to be delivered for the roof, and they were working on some fence work last week. But again, that's a huge improvement at that park. That was a donated project, all fundraising done by the Lakeville Baseball Association. So, that was a great project. And then a project we co-fund with Lakeville is the reconditioning of infield at King Park. A lot of times, there's a re-crowning, adding mix, taking out, redoing the grass infield and that. So, that's been taking place over the last couple weeks, and that's what really was the driving force behind the move of the flag football, which, again, with all the traffic and Dodd being closed, presented some issues, but that's gone pretty seamless, and we wouldn't have done that if we didn't have to. Also upcoming, we're taking registration for all Recreation Arts Center programs, as well as selling tickets for Arts Center performances. We're seeking volunteers for the Haunted Trail, the 23rd Annual Haunted Forest, and Santa Secret Store. You can volunteer for that by calling the Park and Recreation Department office and talking to either Dan Brechner or Patty Dexter. At the Heritage Center, we'll have flu shots on September 19th. On September 26th, we'll celebrate the first anniversary of the Heritage Center. As well as, this coming weekend, there'll be the Lakeville Art Festival, September 21st and 22nd. Looking forward to that. We have the Ben Rosenbusch Concert on the 28th, and we're all the way out to October 12th with a Bill McLaughlin Concert, and Ole and Lena's family reunion. So, again, all these things are available. You can look in the Park and Recreation brochure, you can look in the Arts Center brochure, you can go online and find all of this information as well, or just give us a call. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Next highlighted item on the agenda is item number seven, Presentation of the 2014 Preliminary Budget and Tax Levy. And to give the background information on this agenda item is Finance Director Dennis Feller.
There are little, and members of the city council. It is our pleasure tonight to present to you the preliminary 2014 budget and 2014 property tax levy. As a city emerges from the Great Recession and the post-recession era, there's a number of issues that have confronted the city, that have come to the forefront as themes during the budget process. The first of these are the legislative changes, especially as it relates to the police pension financing, but it also includes the Environmental Protection Agency stormwater regulations, as well as a federal sequestering. One of the more favorable outcomes from the legislative session this past year for Lakeville residents was that the sales tax exemption was provided for most goods and services that are paid for by our taxes and through our utility bills. Lakeville will save over $141,000 per year as a result of the sales tax exemption, which are paid for by property taxes. And in addition to that, there's $95,000 worth of savings for items which are paid for, that we pay for through our utility bills. New residential housing construction is at pre-recession levels, due in large part to the improving economic conditions. Single-family building activity is back to pre-recession levels of 2006, and the resumption of growth will result in increased demands for infrastructure enhancements, as well as service demands, such as inspections, code enforcement, police, fire, streets, and Our city has more than $300 million worth of infrastructure, such as roads, water mains, parks, trails, and other facilities. And these assets require maintenance, and in some cases, replacement. The 2014 budget addresses the short-term financing plan, while the capital improvements plan addresses the more intermediate and long-term financing needs of our community. As the economy improves, there will be upward pressure on commodities, services, and personnel costs. And although inflation is still benign compared to the decade preceding the recession, the budget anticipates modest price increases in the near term for such items as motor fuels, electricity, and salt, which is used for ice control. The most recent Consumer Price Index report indicates that inflation is currently running at 2%. There are trends emerging within our community, which are influenced at least in part by external factors. Almost all crime evidence, which is related to or is connected to some sort of technology. And as such, the proposed budget includes a continued investment and training in technology for police investigation processes. The Emerald Ash Bore Beetle is ravaging the ash tree population in the southwest part of the state and in parts of the metro area. It's not a matter of if the Emerald Ash Bore will come to Lakeville, it's a matter of when. And as such, the proposed budget includes a forester position, as well as a $45,000 reserve for when this event happens, for removal of ash trees on city boulevards. The proposed budget also includes several initiatives, which will continue to focus on Lakeville's on Lakeville's commitment to cost-effectiveness and efficiencies. Projects such as the water meter modernization, which provides for radio read devices on our water meters to improve accuracy. Replacement of the police and fire mobiles and records management system, and financing the park mower acquisitions in such a manner that it's now more cost-effective, and will result in lower taxes. There will continue to be initiatives focused at entrepreneurial efforts. The city will continue to focus on economic development process to attract and retain businesses through its marketing efforts. And with the city's growing population and strategic business objective of trying to secure customers from areas to the south and west of Lakeville, a liquor business plan will be developed in the coming months, which will establish the framework for targeting increased market share with the construction of a new store. One of the budget objectives is to embrace a vision for the future and a commitment to preparing for it. The task force that you recognized here tonight provided that report, and there is funding provided for the coming year to continue those efforts. The proposed budget is $56 million in expenditures, of which 45% is for operations, 37% is for capital and infrastructure, and 16% is for debt. Financing is from a number of sources, of which 43% comes from property taxes. The remaining 57% comes from other areas, such as service fees, issuance of debt, liquor contributions, and use of our current cash reserves. Lakeville's operating costs are substantially below those of other cities at $381 per capita for the coming year, which is 35% below the average twin cities metropolitan community. And according to the Minnesota Office of State Auditor, Lakeville ranks 54th out of 55 cities, the 55 largest cities in the metro area on per capita spending. The question is, what impact does this budget have on the city's tax levy? And what impact does that tax levy have on us, the taxpayers? The initial tax levy proposed in July was $24.3 million, which was a 5.5% increase over the 2013 budget, the 2013 tax levy. The preliminary levy before you tonight is $23.9 million, which is a 3.9% increase over 2013. And that revised preliminary levy has come through numerous meetings with the city council over the last several months. The city council, during the budget process, directed staff to start with the 2013 tax levy and to prioritize the expenditures that make up the tax levy. As such, the highest priority was for legislative mandates, and actually, it's a reduction of $30,000, primarily as a result of the tax exemption granted for goods and services that we purchase. It also takes into account the cost of the election process in 2014 and the police pension financing issues. The tax levy will increase by $23,000 for debt, which are related to city facilities, such as the police station and the central maintenance facility, and there is the increased $253,000 in the tax levy for infrastructure improvements, especially that related to street reconstruction. With respect to service level increases and increases due to growth, the tax levy will increase $659,000. Some of the projects include the police investigator, police chaplaincy program, rookie class to replace firefighters who were retired or resigned. It includes traffic and intersection studies, as well as a fleet service supervisor and several other items. The total tax levy for, preliminary tax levy for 2014 is therefore $23.9 million, which is the 3.9% increase. The largest portion of the tax levy, 37%, goes to public safety, police, and fire services. The second largest category is for debt, 23%, which is primarily for facilities and infrastructure improvements. Other program costs are for like public works, streets and engineering, parks, recreation, and general government services. The preliminary tax levy is 3.9%. However, as a result of the increase in the tax base due to the new residential growth, 2.2%, the net effect on the existing taxpayers is 1.7%. And of that 1.7%, the overwhelming majority is for street reconstruction. The proposed tax levy will result in a $31 increase in the median value home, which is $225,000 for the coming year. And that $31 increase follows four consecutive years of tax decreases for the median value While the median value home will increase $31, there are many property owners that will actually see a decrease in their taxes, and others will see an increase more than $31. And there's a number of factors that are affecting the taxes on each of our individual properties. Factors such as the market value, the changes in market value, those changes as is related to other property in the community, it includes the market value exclusion factors, and the fiscal disparities. Before you tonight is the proposed preliminary 2014 budget and tax levy for your approval tonight. In the coming months, the council will hold a number of work sessions to continue to revisit and refine the budget, and perhaps even adjust it. The public hearing will be conducted on December 2nd. And the primary purpose of that public hearing is to present the budget in a public hearing process, and it is also provides an opportunity for residents to ask questions and to present comments regarding the budget and tax levy. The budget itself will be adopted, as well as the tax levy, on December 16th. Budget information can be found on the city's website. The 2014 budget will continue to evolve in the coming months prior to its adoption. City staff looks forward to providing assistance and support to the city council during this process. And at this time, we'd be happy to answer any of your questions.
Item number seven was approved by the Lakeville City Council. Next highlighted item on the agenda is item number eight, Ordinance Amendment Regarding the Burial of Overhead Utility Lines. And to give the background information regarding this agenda item is Administrative Service Manager, Alan Kennon.
Good evening, excuse me, good evening again, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Tonight, we're going to review Chapter 761 of the City Code. Historically, this section has allowed the city of Lakeville to require all new and existing overhead utility lines to be placed underground. It was brought to staff's attention with the 190th Street Development that this section does not give the city the express authority to require existing overhead lines to be placed underground adjacent to new developments. Therefore, to maintain consistency with past policy and practices, as we've done throughout Lakeville with new developments, staff is recommending that Chapter 761 of the City Code be amended, as shown in your packets in the redline version, to clarify the requirement that overhead utilities, existing overhead utilities adjacent to new developments are required to be placed underground. And staff is available for any questions.
Item number eight was approved by the Lakeville City Council. Well, those were the highlighted items presented to the council at their September 16th, 2013 meeting. If you have any questions or comments regarding these agenda items, please feel free to call City Hall. The number is 952-985-4400. Thanks for watching this edition of Lakeville City Council Wrap-Up.
This is Elwood McFarland, and here are things you and your family can do to stop germs in their tracks. Cover your nose and mouth with a tissue every time you cough or sneeze. If you don't have a tissue, cough or sneeze into your sleeve. Clean your hands often with soap and water, or use portable antibacterial soap or wipes. And if you or a family member is sick, stay home. Follow these simple rules and stop germs in their tracks.